Five in five, four, three. The trustees have set up for inquiring into two subject matter areas. Just to start out with, I almost feel like I gotta move this table up, or you guys gotta move these chairs up. I feel like you're a long way away. But this is an effort for us as trustees tonight to gain some understanding into funding mechanisms for various projects that we have coming up. But specifically, there are two that we're interested in inquiring about this evening. One is a proposal and a request by the students to have built a student recreation center that the trustees have agreed to pass on to the dorm housing commission. But we really don't have much by way of substance in terms of what we had to look at, so we wanted to get a better look at what's involved in that. The second project is, we have an ongoing study and investigation into professional technical facilities here for the, for North Idaho College. This is not, the agenda tonight is not to look at the different sites, it's to look at funding mechanisms that would apply to all of the sites. So we have, as a presentation here tonight, somebody who's going to be talking about the potential for leasing and maybe a purchase option, and that would apply to the Jaclyn facility. And also, we're gonna have folks with regard to bonding and other potential funding resources. In order to try and get this into some kind of a structure where we can hopefully understand and learn from it, what I've done was, I've sort of structured this as having the issue of the student activity center first, because we have the architects here for that. The funding discussions that we expect to have are gonna follow that. But that way, since the architects are here only for that issue, if they don't want to stay around for the whole thing, they can, they can go ahead and leave. Yeah. And then we're going to, generally, I'm gonna ask Bruce Seer and Tom Stasser from Riverbend Corporation to talk about the lease option for that facility that has been proposed to us earlier. And I'm gonna ask Jim Hammond, who is past senator, to tell us a little bit about what may be available from the state, what resources might be available, how we might access them or not, what things we might be able to look at in terms of potential funding from outside of this particular area, maybe on the state level. And then Jan Schwernweber from Panhandle Area Council will help us hopefully with just a general discussion about what Panhandle Area Council does in terms of helping to understand funding mechanisms for projects like ours. Tim Combrecht is here on behalf of the NIC Foundation. It seems like every time we get involved in a discussion like this, somebody says, "Well, can't the foundation do it?" And so, we thought we'd better have somebody from the foundation here, so that as these questions come up, Tim, who is the immediate past president, would be able to, and Rayel Anderson is also here to help him, so that hopefully if there's, as part of the discussion that involves them, they'll be here to help us with that. And then we have Danielle Quade from Holly Troxell. Danielle is a bond attorney, I think, that way you describe yourself, Danielle Quade. And there are two individuals with a bonding expertise, one from Boise and one from Seattle, who will help us understand the issues involved in bonding, and how to go about it, and what the processes might be. Also attending, we have Megan O'Dowd from Ramsdale &amp; Lyons, she's our, they're our council. And Mark Lyons can't be here, he got stalled in Italy, I think, was it? Something like that. And, yeah. And Leslie Damiano is here from the Dorm Housing Commission to also kind of listen in on what's being presented here, because it will be ending up in their lap sooner or later, sooner probably. And so that's an outline of what we want to do. And so, in order to kind of get started, and this will be a kind of a freewheeling exercise, I hope, we'll start out with the ALSC architects and ask them to just kind of describe their involvement thus far. Questions are all right from everybody, even from the audience. We are here to learn. And so, as you listen to the presentation, if there's something that you think is relevant to our understanding these issues of financing, please don't hesitate. If you would want to ask a question, though, I'm gonna ask you to raise your hand and be recognized by the chair, so we can kind of control the conversation. So, with that, Ruston, were you gonna head this off on behalf of ALSC? You might describe for us first your involvement up to this point, because I think a number of people probably don't understand how we got to this point.
I bet. Get ourselves organized here. Everyone hear me okay?
Very good, thanks.
All right. Mr. Chair, members of the Board of Trustees, thank you very much. We're honored to be here, glad to help. ALSC's been in business in the Pacific Northwest for 65 years now, and one of our areas of specialty, sports recreation facilities, everything that you see in these few images are projects we've done here basically in about the last five years, including the biggest image there is the new fitness center for Fairchild Air Force Base. It has a lot of the same kinds of components. But again, we're not gonna dwell on this. We're here specifically and mostly to answer questions. Happy to go through our very brief presentation here. Myself, Ruston Hall, I'm a principal with ALSC Architects. To my left is Dave Houdry, one of my partners at ALSC. And again, the reason for our being here tonight, we have been assisting here in the last few weeks with some very high-flying, rough-order-of-magnitude types of exercises. Some of that information was presented to you at your last meeting. And we're gonna touch on some of that again, talk about how we've come up with some of the numbers that we projected, touch briefly on the schedules that were presented to you as well. And then, again, just primarily be here for questions. Very informal, please. The only poor question is the one that no one asks, so we're ready when you are. Feel free to interrupt as we go here. Once again, a lot of these images that you're seeing up here are other like facilities at Gonzaga University, YMCA facilities, again, out at the Fairchild Air Force Base, and others. So, with that, I'm gonna go ahead and move quickly and turn it over to Dave. These images are what you saw again the last time. We'll back up, give you a little bit of backup on what 8.2 project cost means, what that looks like, and then why we gave you two different schedules for each of these different projects. So, Dave, why don't you go ahead and take it?
Well, thank you. I'm Dave. It's great to be here tonight. These are the kinds of things we get really excited talking about. This isn't gonna be about design. This is just talking gross order of magnitude, scope of work, schedule of work, and budget of the work. And we know that at this point, we need to start getting down into weeds on some of the details, but the details are based on a lot of assumptions, so we'll try and make sure we know what those are. But again, it's not based on, on design. The, this is just an overall summary sheet, and it's, I'm gonna move into this in more detail, so it'll be a little bit easier to see. But what we took a look at were two alternatives. One is a new facility on a new site. It's essentially a 27,000 square foot facility based on pro forma information that you guys have already created. So that's not of our creation, it's just us responding to that. And this is a summary sheet that we have used to go over with Grayden Stanley, Alex Harris, Heather, to talk about the scope of work and what is in the program assumptions and what the cost might be. So, when this breaks down, what we did is we identified key areas, administrative areas, gymnasiums, other activity spaces, support spaces, and we go into a fair amount of detail. We identify what are the spaces that came out of the pro forma that have X number of square feet. We have to apply a very rudimentary judgment cost to that. What do we think its construction cost is gonna be? And work our way through the various components. This gives us an opportunity to do a gut check on the size of the facility, the size of the program areas, and give a little bit of thought to relationships, because we know that it's likely in a, in a facility that's got gymnasiums and perhaps climbing walls, there's a two-story aspect to this building, and some portion of the program areas may very well likely wind up on the second level. But it's probably safe to say of a 27,000, 28,000 square foot facility, probably 20,000 square feet of that is gonna be ground floor area. We can probably at this point, safe to say it's about 25% of it could go to an upper level. So we go through the construction cost, and one of the things that we have to identify in here, it's the second line item down, and it's a 20% core and circulation spaces. We have to carry an allowance for areas that are not programmed yet, but we know we're gonna make a building viable. And one of the areas that we've looked at is the circulation core support spaces. 20% is a lean and mean approach. It's a more on the utilitarian side as opposed to grandiose side, but it's trying to provide a facility that is very thoughtful, very straightforward, it's efficient, but it's, again, it's more towards the lean side. It doesn't have huge common public lobbies and other spaces. And that's certainly something that's gonna need to be flushed out in an actual programming phase for the project. But when we do that, and we also take a look at site development and allowance, and this is based on our experience and history in planning facilities, when we open up the earth to put a building on, we know that there's a certain amount of repair and restoration that needs to occur, as well as access, roads, utilities, and the like. So where this came up to was a construction cost of about $5.3 million for this new facility on a new site. Now, construction cost, a good way to look at that is, that's kind of the cost from the contractor to the client. But we need to then identify what's the cost from the client to the people that are paying it. In this case, it may be the students, it may be a bonding agency. So we have to go through project-related soft costs. So following the, after the yellow bar on top, we have to go through the, all the items that are typically included in a project, make sure that we've got some margins for safety, we've got things covered, we cover fees, we cover contingencies, we cover things like value engineering, building commissioning, things that we know are likely to be included in the scope of work, but perhaps outside the role of the general contractor. And when we get done doing this, we come up with, for the new facility on the new site, about $8.2 million. And that's the, that matches the number that you would've seen here a few weeks ago when it was initially presented to you as one of the two alternatives.
Back up a minute, Ruston.
One of the items that is a large item in the project-related soft cost is an FF&amp;E allowance. It's furniture, fixtures, and equipment. We're carrying a goodly sum of money there. These are the kinds of facilities that are full of cardio machines, expensive equipment. It goes beyond desks and chairs and file cabinets and lobby furniture. This gets into the heart and soul of what makes a fitness facility run. So that's included in there at a pretty healthy rate. So the next scenario that we went through, oh, this kind of summarizes it. So the green are the summary of the major program areas, the yellow is the summary of the construction cost, and the purple is the project cost. And when you hear us talking about cost, we really need to be emphasizing the project cost, the bottom line, you know, dealer prep, all the bells and whistles included. And again, this is a project that has not been designed, it hasn't even been cited, so it's based on good assumptions, previous pro formas, but it's pre-designed and it's even pre-programming. So the next one is, that we took a look at in more detail, was an addition to Christiansen and a remodel of Christiansen. And following a similar logic, the top half is basically the construction program areas in green, comes down to a construction cost total in yellow, and then the project cost added to that. The first item that is unique to this, and it's the remodeled spaces in Christiansen Gymnasium. And we talked about an addition to Christiansen Gym, what would need to be remodeled in that facility to make an addition to it viable for use as a student recreation center. And one of the things that happens real quickly is, we take a look at what's going on on the stage, and we take a look at what's going on in the locker rooms, knowing that those are probably gonna be affected by an addition, and also keeping an eye on whether a remodel of the locker rooms is necessary or part of the project, because now we know it could be pressed into dual duty. It could be, it could be support space for the fitness center, or it may just need to be updated for use by athletics. So there's some, there's some kind of speculation variables in the addition and remodel approach. But the top piece here is a summary of program spaces that would likely be affected, that we believe we need to budget for and recognize early on. The next page basically follows the same program areas, so they're new construction, it's just adjacent to an existing building and attached to a remodel, summarizes the program areas in basically the same manner, takes us to the project costs, similar approach. Again, we're using about a 20% circulation and support, which is very efficient, but very doable. That's one area that through the programming process we could find gets larger. As we looked at Christiansen, one of the things that we discovered is there isn't a lot of circulation and support in the Christiansen Gymnasium building that we could rely upon to serve the needs for a fitness center addition. So we were looking for some economies there, and we weren't necessarily finding it in our first pass. Same approach to furniture, fixtures, and equipment. And when we track this through for the total project cost, it comes in at about $9.2 million. The difference is, is there's a little bit trickier site, sighting, site work aspect to this. We've talked extensively about how much room there is for the building as an addition to Christiansen, what campus utilities may, may already be in place or may be in the way, what circulation and support from the vehicular standpoint or student access, and then just reopening up the earth and repairing it again, and then the similar approach to furniture, fixtures, and equipment. So the two summarize in more detail what you saw here a few weeks ago. We're, we're using a budget, project budget for standalone facility at about 8.2 million, and an equivalent in addition to Christiansen Gymnasium of about 9.2. And the difference basically has to do with site difficulty and the spaces in Christiansen Gymnasium that are being remodeled as a result of attaching to the building that may not be part of the, of the educational or program in the fitness center. And then that's the summary for that. Again, I apologize for being small, we'll answer all the questions as we need to.
Anybody, any of the trustees have any questions at this point? I do, I have a question. You mentioned 27,000 square feet for the new facility. Is that approximately the same square footage that you would have in Christiansen as remodeled in your?
We were adding 27,000 to Christiansen. So that, that is probably the area that would take the most work, is the, the area that is being identified in either of these scenarios is 27,000 square feet for fitness space. What we haven't been able to see, or what we haven't heard yet, is are there pieces of Christiansen that could be used for the fitness program that would cause us to not build as much building? And that's certainly a conversation we need to get deeper into. And that's a little bit up in the air with regards to other campus and community plans on where athletics may be housed in the coming years, an event center or other, other activities. So we're not, at this point, we're not banking on spaces in Christiansen being able to serve fitness needs. The variable there might be locker rooms. There's four locker rooms in there, but again, some of that variable needs looked at more closely when we evaluate athletic use versus fitness use and how to, how to balance those. So we're not, we're not making the addition smaller because it's attached to, to Christiansen. That's the assumption at this time. Certainly needs more, more look and more discussion. Did that answer the question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Christine?
So then, I know you didn't want to talk too much about design, but I would assume then you would go up with Christiansen?
Where do you go, yeah?
Yeah, where, where does this 27,000 feet go hard?
Very, very quickly, I mentioned that probably 20,000 square feet of that 27,000 is gonna be ground level space. And our first pass at this and looking at it, and honestly, we haven't received much coaching or had much conversation about citing, but it appears moving towards the west, towards the river, is the direction that Christiansen could expand. And that's why it would, an addition would back up to the stage area that currently has a lot of, it's already been retrofitted into offices on that outside wall. So we're seeing right now the opportunity for expansion of Christiansen with a building addition is to the west, towards the childcare facility.
childcare facility over the remodeled parking lot.
Now, there's an opportunity it could move north toward Edminster, but that starts to get kind of tight in there as well. So we, we haven't spent a lot of time citing it, other than, we think there's probably 20,000 square feet of building that's gonna happen. It's either gonna happen on the riverside, or it's gonna happen on the north side of the building, or some combination of the two.
Yes. Dave?
Well, I guess I have two questions. I wanna make sure I'm clear on this, 'cause those questions got me thinking further. So basically, the proposal, the 99, 9.2 million, in that proposal, we're, we're thinking that Christiansen Gym continues in its current usage, and that we're not utilizing any of that for this new facility. So basically, it's a, it's an attached standalone facility, if you will?
Correct.
Okay.
That's our assumption at this point.
Okay, then that, that gets me closer to understand why, when I look at the schedules, they look identical, if you will. And I was trying to think how the remodel and that versus the new construction would come up with a similar timeline. So is that, that's why we're seeing a similar timeline then, because of the nature of that?
I'll, I'll jump in here.
Ruston's gonna jump on the, on the schedule and timeline portion of this, so.
Okay.
Anything else on, on cost, and we can certainly tag team back and forth as we go. And hopefully, this will be able to answer your question.
Good, thank you.
All right, what you see on the screen there, there are, are two versions of schedules here, and as, as was mentioned, they're very, very similar. The reason we did two different schedules, we looked at two different delivery methods. And the reason we're looking at schedule to begin with in the first place is that has everything to do with trying to time the project, which assists us in figuring out how much it's going to cost. Typically, things get more expensive over time, as everybody knows. And we're testing a starting point on this particular schedule, as you saw last time, starting pretty much this month, in a process of getting through selection, getting a team on board, getting the design work, pre-designed, design work done, and trying to break ground next spring. Both delivery methods have about that same starting period next spring. When I say two delivery methods, one is traditional, what we call design bid-build. You hire a team directly, you design the facility, prepare a set of bidding documents, you then invite contractors to provide you with a bid, and when they are selected, they then start construction. The design-build-delivery method's quite a bit different than that. You hire a design builder, which includes the contractor and the architect, and it's quite a different process, that's why I've got two different schemes to show you. And as I said, it doesn't buy you a lot of time on the design side of things, but it can buy you potentially a significant amount of time on the construction side in a design-build format. I'm not gonna talk a lot about design-build, that's a whole nother hour's worth of discussion that we can get into at another time. So this is, again, the preliminary schedule, design, bid, build, delivery. And the first bar there is the preparing an RFQ and selecting a team. That gets you out into July. Pre-design, we call it programming, we call it basis of design. It's basically filling in all the blanks that says, "This is what this facility has to do." These are the exact spaces, the exact amenities, the exact costs. And that sets a final budget that then the design team sticks to throughout the course of the rest of the project. We then go through our, our typical schematic design review, design development review, construction documents and review, and at the same time, going in for a building permit application. And again, all that aligns out there, and as you can see, in March and April, that's where that, that bid period starts. You negotiate that contract, then approximately in May, and get going, go ahead and go to the next one. This is the tail end of that schedule. I broke it into two pieces, so we could hopefully read at least part of it. You can see we're then under construction in June, and then July through March of 15, April and May. So you start your move-in process, June, July, and by August, ready to start classes, August 15th, you've got a building fully commissioned, outfitted, and ready to go. Now, in general terms, this is a, I would call this an average pace schedule. Could you do it faster than this? You certainly could. If it takes you longer to get through your selection processes and so on, that's fine. The key would be trying to get it started next spring. We're pushing it on the schedule a little bit, we're showing groundbreaking March, April. It's all weather dependent. If the ground's still frozen, that's a really poor time to try to start digging. But nonetheless, if it's favorable conditions, that saves you time and money getting it done quicker. So again, that's the traditional side, and what we have provided to, to Grayden per his request, along the bottom there, you'll see a bunch of numbers. We're trying to give him basically a burn rate, or in other words, what's the cash flow projection based on this? Can you go back for just a minute, Dave? We showed some of these numbers in red, you'll see a total there of 219,000. That's what you've spent through October in order to basically get to a design development stage of delivering the, the design for the facility. Go ahead and click forward to, this is a design-build-delivery method, a little bit different. And even, design-build, literally, there's dozens of different ways you can construct that type of schedule. This depicts it where you hire a firm to put together your, your pre-designed documents for you, and you run basically a design-build competition. These are very, very popular these days. As with any given process, there's good and bad to, to any of them. But you can see in this one, you end up getting into the design development phase at about the same point. But you can also see by then, you've spent $319,000. Reason for that, you, there's a heavier investment up front, there's more parties involved, including a construction manager to get your, all your pre-designed work done for you, and also, there's typically an honorarium in a design-build competition, where the teams that are not selected are given a stipend of sorts to cover some of the costs, because it is quite expensive going through those competitions. But then, the benefit is there becomes overlap. When you are doing design-build, you're hiring the designers and the contractors at the same time. So rather than the contractor having to wait until a set of bid documents is all ready to go, out in October sometime, they're brought on board right at the beginning. So as we're designing, they're costing, they're looking at those material long lead items, and getting those things done ahead of time. So rather than the schedule entirely stacking, you know, sequentially like this, you get a lot of overlap. It's called fast track, it's called a number of different things, but they would typically get a permit and start digging and building foundations and infrastructure before the rest of the design is even finished. But that's the savings. It's in time and also in money. There's fewer change orders, fewer points of contention between designer and builder, because they're one unit that you're contracted with. So a lot of advantages in that system. Go ahead and go to the next one. So as you can see here, rather than moving in in August, and this, you're moving in in June. So that easily saves at least a couple months. And again, this is not a super aggressive schedule. Could it be done faster? Probably. But that upfront work is very intense. That would be starting now, in order to get either of these scenarios, as depicted here, underway. Now, sir, to your question regarding the two different schedules, this is based primarily on a freestanding building, and to your point, even in addition to Christiansen, depending on how you did it, could very much still be almost entirely a freestanding building with, it could be a skybridge connection, there's a number of ways to do it. The difference, that million dollars is really inside of Christiansen itself. And that's where it can be potentially even invisible in this schedule, or a different case scenario, it could be a separate, totally sequential thing. You could still get your new addition open and choose to wait, and then temporarily put some of the athletic types of events in there while you disrupt Christiansen. Or you could do them at the same time. This assumes they're being done, you know, basically at the same time. Again, we just don't know enough to, to give it a real definitive look. But that, does that answer your question, sir?
It does. But may I ask a follow-on question then?
Of course.
Because you've piqued my interest. When you mentioned the, the two timelines that you could be utilizing, the traditional versus the alternative or fast track, as you referred to it, you did indicate that not only could there be a potential time savings of approximately two months, plus or minus, that there could be a cost savings. When we look at the 8.2 and the 9.2 million, are those for a traditional process, or would that be for the fast-track process? Or could those numbers possibly adjust a little bit, maybe little additional savings on the fast-track?
Yeah, these are listed as, as the same number. Savings there, design-build gets sort of a panacea sort of surrounding around it, which is really not true.
So an open-ended, maybe, a question?
We've done, oh goodness sakes, I think in the last 10 years, we've about done probably 130 million in design-build delivery. You might say 5%?
Okay.
But that's a lot of money, and that's a definite distinct advantage. It could be more. Where it is in cost, cost, change order avoidance, and a lot of that's also in delays. When we're working together, and again, when you can overlap, that's significant savings of time.
Yes, Christine, did you have a question?
I do, thank you. You know, the financing of this, we'll discuss in a little bit, and the students, it's pretty clear the students are collecting fees, and, and this will be funded by the students. But the big decision for the board is location. So it would be helpful, even though you don't have any kind of design, if we could see some kind of speculative map, footprint of our property, of that 27,000 square feet, whether you went toward the river or toward the north. I guess I always envisioned that we were going up with Christiansen, and maybe that's not possible at all. But I just never really thought much into it. But now, that is a big decision for the board, of which direction do we go, how does it impact our other facilities? And then, you talked about maybe it being a standalone, or is it, is the design, and I know you haven't designed it yet, but is the idea that it ties into Christiansen in some way for joint use? If you could maybe expand on that?
Sure. There, I'll expand as best I can, there's been very little discussion thus far. It could be anywhere from an actual sharing a wall with Christiansen to being It could be anywhere from an actual sharing a wall with Christiansen, to being separated with a, perhaps a sidewalk of some sort. Again, it just, as you said, and rightly so, it, there's a lot of work to be done onsite analysis before you would ever choose one. Certainly, the freestanding option allows you maybe to put it somewhere else entirely on campus. Again, we don't know what your, your goals or specific desires are there, but, but yeah, specifically with Christiansen, going up entirely is probably not practical for that building, it would be extremely cost prohibitive, just because you're adding so much load to existing structure that was never designed for that.
Okay.
You'd end up rebuilding pretty much, it'd be better off to knock it down if you were going to do that, honestly. So this, everything we've been talking about thus far is either addition to, next to, or perhaps somewhere else on campus. That's about as much as I can expand at this point, we haven't, haven't done any further work on that.
You know, we, we can't help but look at sites and potential, and we've spent a little time looking around Christiansen, thinking to ourselves, what if? Well, we've done the same to a degree. We have to restrain ourselves, but with regards to where is a new site, what's come up in conversations with NIC folks? And we know that the area in the proximity of the sewage treatment plant, in connection with the education corridor, near ample parking, student housing, there's a couple parcels there that we know have either been earmarked or make it a ripe, a ripe candidate for a facility in, in that area. So, you know, in looking on this map, we know there's, we know there's new site potential in that area, and then we know that there's the close proximity opportunity with, with Christiansen right there. So that's as far as we've gone at looking at the sites. Boy, say the word, and we dive in deep on that subject. We've just had to restrain ourselves a little bit until we got more information about our marching orders and, and what we should consider more deeply.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Gentlemen, thank you very, very much. I appreciate that overview of what you've been asked to do. It presents some additional questions for us, I think, to think about. And before you sit down, though, just on, I realize that the students have a preference as to where they'd like to get to be freestanding, as opposed to remodel. But Leslie, do you have any questions of these gentlemen before we ask them to sit down? I know this is all new to you, and...
Can I get a copy of that breaking?
Yes.
Can I just put that on the screen?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I was going to have Bruce here and Tom Stosser come up next, but Jim Hammond has agreed to be here, and he's tucked us into a tight schedule, he's trying to leave town. Is that ahead of the posse, Jim?
Yeah.
Yeah. So why don't, why don't you come up next, so that we can get you free to continue your travels. We invited you here because you have some insight into the state funding mechanisms and the operation of various state agencies and that sort of thing. And as you know, on our professional technical facility particularly, we're looking for ways to be able to fund it. And the invite to you, and I appreciate that it's pretty general, but do you have anything that you can help us, to offer us, to help us understand where we might go for money? What might be available, what kinds of money or funding might be available? That sort of thing.
Mr. Chairman, first of all, I want you to know that I'm holding onto my own wallet pretty tight today. And to the architects over here, I just wanted to say, we don't have sewage treatment plants anymore, we have water reclamation plants. Particularly when they're so close. There, there really are two sources available, and both of those sources of funding have been used in the very recent past. One to fund the Meyer Building, just to the west here, and that was from the Idaho State Building Authority. And then the remodel of the, the building over here to the east, and I forget the name of it. That was done with the permanent building funds. And so, I'll, I'll start first with permanent building funds. The permanent building funds were established by code many years ago, as a way of building and, and maintaining state facilities. There are within code certain sources of revenue that have, that a percentage of that goes into the permanent building fund. And then you will notice on your income tax, every year, there is a $10 per head charge that goes to that permanent building fund. On top of that, if the revenue is available, the Joint Finance and Appropriation Committee has chosen to also provide additional funding to the permanent building fund. In the most recent years, the permanent building fund, funds have been used for deferred maintenance. There is such a backlog of deferred maintenance, particularly on state institutions, University of Idaho has the biggest backlog, and, and then ISU and BSU, and of course, the, the community colleges and LCSC all have some deferred maintenance as well. So, and I think the reason, that, that decision is made by that board that chaired, that makes the decisions on permanent building funds. But because we've had these lean years in, in terms of the state budget, they decided just to focus on those deferred maintenance issues. As the, the economy turns around, and funding grows in the state, then I expect to see more money go back into that fund to assist with other issues. The, the value of the permanent building fund for you, as you look at funds, is twofold. One, you, you can just go to them and seek a certain amount of money. And you just get in the queue with everybody else. But you can also, more, a more effective strategy, I should say, is that you can go to them and say, you have these other sources of funds, and if, if you, if this can be just a part of your total funding picture, you're more likely to secure funds from the permanent building fund. Because then they see their funds going farther in terms of, of creating facilities or adding on to facilities, because you're matching their funds with other funds. If you just go to them and ask for the total sum, you're unlikely to meet success in this, in this day and age with that fund. The other thing that's happened is that the amount that's going into that fund, in true dollars, has actually diminished, because it's a, a flat dollar rate rather than a percent. So, and, and it hasn't been raised in, wow, it's been $10 since I've been in Idaho, and that's 40 years. So it, it really deserves some look, but, but in the meantime, the only other thing that will happen, and I know in the years that I served on JFAC, the first couple of years, we, I think we put 50 million additional funds in there beyond what was statutorily required. The other source of funding, in fact, I serve as the vice chairman for this, is the Idaho State Building Authority. And, and that was formed, I should tell you the story first. When, years ago, I was asked to serve on the, to be a candidate, I should say, for the State Board of Education. At the same time, there was another candidate, and, and that candidate was a former Speaker of the House. And Governor Bat called me and said, Jim, I'm sorry, I can't put you on there, I'd like to, but I can't turn down the Speaker, which I said, well, I sure understand, Governor. And then about three weeks later, he called and said, would you be willing to serve on the State Building Authority? And I said, well, sure, Governor, I'd be glad to serve you any way I can. So then I immediately went back to my office to see what the heck the State Building Authority was. And I'll bet you most of you don't know what that is. Well, Danielle, I know you do.
You better, Danielle.
Danielle has worked with us a lot over the years. Anyway, the, the Building Authority was set up to enable the state to build facilities without the state incurring debt. So the Building Authority is not a government entity, they call it a body politic separate. And so, that, we have the ability to bond, based upon approval of the legislature, to bond for state facilities. And we bonded for the facilities that most recently were built throughout the state, the Meyer Building is the example here. And then what happens is that when the legislature approves that, then each year, over the life of the bond, and they have been 15, typically they're 20-year bonds, the legislature, that's a high priority, is to fund those bonds, the, the payments on those bonds each year. When the bonds are paid off, then we sell the building and the land back to the state for a dollar. But it allows the state, who had been renting a lot of their facilities, to actually own facilities, and that's basically what we do. We also funded the capital, the reconstruction of the capital. The, the value of that here is, again, I, I think that if NIC were to go to the legislature with the fact that this was one source of their funding, I think there's an opportunity to do that. And I think that, again, they are probably more willing to try to fund something for NIC, if they see it is in conjunction with some local effort of some sort. Whether that's through student fees, whether that's through a, a local bond issue for part of it, whether that's through the, I just lost the term. That it's, they've been doing all the work over here for the, the roads and et cetera.
CDC.
Urban renewal.
Urban renewal. I don't know, I could ever forget that. There wasn't a year I was in the legislature that I didn't have to carry urban renewal legislation. It was always Jim's job, because nobody else understood it. But if you can be seen as securing other sources and making that local effort, again, I think you have a greater chance of securing state funds for facilities. And the reason that I think NIC deserves those as much as anybody else is, is twofold. One is that NIC, the NIC is carrying a load that otherwise would fall as a burden on the state, and at a higher expense than at NIC. And secondly, up here, NIC is now providing a, pretty much a four-year campus through its work with LCSC and University of Idaho, some with Boise State, and also with Pocatello. So BSU and ISU. So I, I think that there is some real value to that consideration as well.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
That was very informative. Thank you.
Sure.
What, I know you've been out of the legislature for about a year or two now, and the finances, as we hear, are improving on, on the state level, but what's, what's the likelihood of us being able to get that funding, and how long might it take? It sounds like it's a, it's a legislative application, you need to have a, something passed by the legislature in order to get the bonding approved, and can you give us an idea of what the likelihood is and how long it would take?
Well, actually, it can be. If, if you were wishing to do that in, in the coming year, in 2014, 2015, I think you could do it in the 2014 legislature, if the funding was available. I mean, it's not impossible, that, and I'm talking about the possible, but I'm not, that doesn't include the political side of it. Politically, it's, the legislature is a really interesting body. It doesn't always make sense what passes and what fails. So predicting that's a bit of a challenge. And the, the face of the legislature has changed. It, it has become even more conservative in, in the past few years. So I, I don't know what that means in terms of something like this, but it certainly is possible. But right now, it's still a bit of a challenge. I'm noticing this year, the, last year, the funding was above projections by, I think, about 100 million. This year, already, there are about 70 million above projections. But even that is, is kind of a risky figure to take, because we started projecting in a very conservative manner. I served on the committee that set those projections. And the reason for that is we'd rather, we, we would rather end up with some kind of a surplus, as opposed to ending up overshooting our headlights and, and scrambling for dollars at the last minute. And the trouble is, just like you folks, we set a budget for a year without knowing really for sure what's going to happen in that coming year. You, you just have to do your best estimates of, of what your revenue's going to be and move forward. The, the thing that then happens, if you don't make it, is then the, the governor and legislative leadership get together and decide where to hold, or they send all of you, all, all of the institutions, as well as all the state, a command to make some kind of a holdback, they call it. And really, all that means is, we're not going to give you as much as we said we would. So.
Been there.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Got one more.
Yes?
So Jim, we, we've heard that there, the surplus, you say it's 70 million, maybe by the end of the year, the projection's maybe 140 million. Based on what you know of our current JFAC members, do you feel that it'll all go into a rainy day fund, or do you feel like some of it will go to education?
No, I don't think it will all go into a rainy day fund. There is a statutory minimum that has to go in there. But beyond that, they're going to try to, to build up a fund again. But I don't see all of that going in there, particularly the way that education was receiving reductions, more so in higher ed than in K-12. And so I, I suspect that some of that will come forth. I think the biggest challenge that anybody's up against in terms of new facilities is the deferred maintenance issue. That's a big one. And Judy, you remember that when you were on the board, and I remember that when I was on...
To you.
We, we struggled with that forever. And of course, we, we were just passer agents for funds, but still, I, I think that, in fact, what, in my last session, I was visiting with the chairman of the Permanent Building Fund, and he was very agreeable to the idea of setting some money aside. And in fact, some, I'm sorry, I forgot to say that. The, the Permanent Building Fund has been willing to say, okay, we'll put 4 million aside this year, and 4 million aside next year, or even over a three-year cycle, as you build up your other resources. And if you get your other resources in line, then you got your 12 million from the state, or whatever that would be. So that's also another strategy that can be a very effective strategy in trying to get some money from the state.
I mean, the 4 million each year sounds like a lot of money, but there's a lot of competition for that money, isn't there?
Right. Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions? Jim, thank you very much for taking your time to come down to...
You're very welcome. And as you continue in this effort, if I can be of any assistance, I'm glad to do so.
Thank you very much. Bruce and Tom, on the presentation on the, from Riverbend.
Okay. Thank you for having us. So just a quick background, what transpired is RGU was most of the way through their study when the announcement hit the papers about Jaclyn Seed Company relocating to the Columbia Basin. And the next morning, we got contacted by RGU saying, we'd like to look at the site, is it something that could work? And so we responded to them, worked with them on what requirements they wanted, to see if the site fit, and we met those requirements, and we responded with a proposal to them. Then subsequent to that, during the public forums, we kind of gave an update on... Then subsequent to that, during the public forums, we kind of gave an update on, you know, how that would work and how you could potentially fund this without a bonding mechanism or other sources. So at this point, we're prepared to talk in a little bit more detail about what our proposal was and how we get to funding that, because I know some of you, I don't know if everybody's seen the original proposal we sent to RGU, I don't know, I know some of you weren't there when we did the public forum, I know some of you haven't seen the site, so I don't know how far to go, so we'll start, and if there's too many details, you can say, move it on. Okay. Let me, let me do this, let me give you a copy of the proposal that we sent to RGU in response, and then we'll kind of go through those points. We won't belabor them, but we'll go through them.
Thank you.
So the site encompasses 14 acres. That is the new Beck Interchange that's going out by the Jaclyn Seed site next to the Greyhound Park. So on the right-hand side of that screen is where the Greyhound Park is, and this is on the south side of the freeway, if you're not familiar with the site. And the site can be accessed both directly off the freeway, you can see we literally off the off-ramp, it comes right into the site, so it has excellent freeway access. And then the road on the northern end of the site that parallels the freeway, that's actually where the road comes in, and you can access it from the northeast side of the site. The roads highlighted in green up there are going to be private roads that are scheduled to be completed in September at our expense. The portion of the road on the left side is half-built per city standards. It's going to be 18 feet wide. The main one through it is built as a full-width city road, 36 feet wide. The, part of our proposal that RG wanted is, included in the lease rate that we proposed to you, we'll get into a little later, we would install paved parking and storm swales to accommodate 240 vehicles. That was the amount that covered 30 years' worth of need. I know the first phase is only 60 parking slots, and we can talk about phasing that as an alternative. The buildings highlighted in yellow up there, they look almost green to me from here, but those are comprised about 170,000 square feet of space, open space. There's a small building that's in red or orange down in the corner, and that building, we would provide at no cost to NIC because it may be removed when that private road on the south end is completely finished to city standards with sidewalks, swales, streetlights, all of that. There's a shop and a lab building down there that, at the time, that, there's been many staff members that have come through, and I don't know if Mike, yeah, Mike's here. There was once talk about putting the OP RV facility into the existing shop. The Jaclyn Seed site has a shop that maintained 300 trailers and 80 vehicles, it's got all the capabilities of doing it. And if you wanted to lease that, we're open to it, but that isn't what we were asked for from RGU. In addition, it's not on there, but the office building that sits right on the river, you know, Bruce is trying to point to it, and I believe it's got 12,000 square feet. The RGU proposal for all the sites that aren't on campus envisioned building a student services facility, and as another way of containing costs and saving $3 million at the onset to build a student services facility within the 170,000 square feet, again, we'd be happy to lease that to NIC. It wasn't what RGU asked of us, but we're just throwing out all the different things we'd be willing to do to work with NIC to meet their needs. There's two little buildings there with an X in them. Those will be removed at our cost and the ground reclaimed for parking. The buildings that are highlighted in yellow that look like green, that have a blue outline there, it's the biggest contiguous facility there, that's about 150,000 square feet, and this will be insulated at code, commercial code, at landlord's expense as part of the lease rate that we've proposed. All the existing restroom facilities that are in there will be connected to the city sewer at landlord's expense, that's all included. And there's so many different things we're talking about. I think, at this point, I'm going to let Bruce describe all the infrastructure improvements the landlord will do to the site at our cost that were included in the lease rate that was requested by RGU. The goal was to provide a shell that was more apples-to-apples to the shells that RGU was attempting to build, so he can.
Tom did a pretty good job of explaining to you some of the major ones, and one is the city street, city standards, with the sewer and water going down the Green Road, which is the far south. And it's a 36-foot-wide road, a normal city street when it's finally finished, that would be 40 feet. We left, left a couple of feet on each side, so when we finally turned it into a public road, which wouldn't happen right away, you would have, you would have the room for the city sidewalks and the, and the streetlights and all the dry utilities, as well as the swales. So the original plan, the beginning plan, is to, for us to build a 36-foot-wide road coming through there that would be called a private road, and we would stub out, as Tom mentioned, for the existing facilities, we would stub and connect the bathrooms and the sewer facilities, as well as the water facilities, so you're hooked up to city sewer and city water. We would also, for the future needs that you might have as you expand through there, stub out a number of different, up to 10 or 12 different stubbings that would allow you to access it later on as you built on and wanted to add more bathrooms or more water uses, you'd be able to do it, just like you would in a subdivision. So we'll have, built into the, into the roads, the infrastructure that allows for your expansion, you'd still have the connection issue, but at least there's no tear-up of the roads and it's already in there. And we'd work with whatever staff you had, or architects or engineers, for exactly where they're, we kind of put them in what we thought was legitimate places, but all that's adjustable prior to construction, or it can be easily amended if we get there. Going up the west side is an 18-foot road because that's a right-of-way that would, that would, is, the owner on the other side, Handsome Properties, has the right to, and has the obligation to do it whenever he decides to do his development. But we would pave and, again, put in the facilities to connect that back to Riverbend Avenue, or which will be now named Grassland Avenue, which was the north road that was in green, which is now your Circle Drive going all the way out. So you'd have access, as Tom said, coming from over the freeway, from east or west, to come off Point Parkway, which is the blue, into, onto Riverbend Avenue, and then if you wanted to access back out and go without going back on the freeway, you could go Riverbend Avenue, as we, as we do currently.
It might be helpful if you, with your red pointer, showed how the traffic flows on and off the freeway, that probably is confusing to people.
Well, this, if you come on the freeway right here, there's the exit ramp. You either go north, right there, to Cabela's, or you come south to here, which is, to the, to the east, would be the entrance coming into, to NIC. And if you went to east, you would go around the dog track, the dog track would be sitting right here, and then access back on to the existing Riverbend Avenue. So this used to be some dog track land and some Riverbend land. So if you were coming from Riverbend Avenue without, and if you came off the freeway from the east, you'd come up here, go across, and do the same thing.
And Grassland goes.
And Grassland goes, Grassland, which is this road, the old Riverbend Avenue, is called Grassland Avenue now, it goes under the freeway right here. So you'd be coming, if you came down, if you got off at Pleasant View, as you would today, you'd get off right here, and you would either come in this way or turn and come in this way. So you have that circular route of being able to have access both ways. The parking design that we had, we got from RGU through H2A, was, was designed around putting parking here, parking here, parking here, and parking along there. Again, it was, we were trying to figure out whether there was room for 240 spaces as it was proposed for the 30-year build-out north of the access road, because we were trying to hold down the purchase price and limit, limit what your, what your needs were on land, which was just this 14 acres. So there's room for 240 places there, just in a preliminary design, and I'm sure with some efficiencies, it can even be better. So infrastructure on the inside of the building, one, the buildings themselves are, as was mentioned in the study, are a little over 30 years old. Some people think that's, you know, to a person, that's not very young. To me, it seems awful young. To a building, I think it just depends on what kind of maintenance you've had and what kind of building it was, and what kind of structure was built in originally. We have much older buildings than that, standing and usable and changed and remodeled all over the place today, on everybody's campus, as well as on everybody's private property site. I was up at the fairgrounds today looking at the Jaclyn building, which is one that was donated by the Jaclyns to do some, to the fairgrounds years ago. That was a used building when it was put up. So it's still well-used and painted and maintained, and no one would realize it, but that was an old beverage. I don't know which brand of beer was in it, but it was a, it was just a warehouse for, for someone to store their beer a long time ago, and now it's a, almost a new-looking facility. So they can stand a long time, as long as maintenance is done. And I think with the steel building structure, the flexibility that you have is completely different than the flexibility you might have with a concrete structure. You, either way, you've got to expand out, or you've got to cut a wall in, but with the steel, you've got the, you've got the inner structure that's just the columns and the beams, and then you've got steel structure in between that you can cut and fabricate and fix a lot easier. So it comes with it some flexibilities that I think not all architects appreciate. We were going to insulate it because it's got no insulation today because, because the needs of the seed company were just to be dry, not necessarily be heated. So the insulation we were going to put in was, was a commercial code, R21 on the walls and R38 in the ceilings. We just budgeted that in. Again, it was for the 150,000 square feet. That could be phased in as you needed, or that could be something that, if it was, if you didn't need all the insulation at one time, or you wanted to do it differently, we're glad to work with the architects on, on how that design would be helpful, both financially and more design. We were, the roof in this outside shell structure is something that the landlord maintains in our proposal, so if you had leaks in the roof, we'd be fixing them as long as you're releasing. And there are pretty easy fixes today that are even better than the steel roofs. I mean, you can put an actual fabric over the top of the roof that gives it a 50-year life or a 30-year life and have that warranty. So you can eliminate a lot of the common ailments of steel roofs by simply, you know, purchasing a new, a new roof, if you will. But it's really a new roof over the top of the existing structure. Other questions that we have?
Did you have some questions?
Yeah.
We have a question here.
Oh.
Before you go in the interior building, looking at your map there, there's a parcel between the blue lines.
There?
Yep. And then one below it, it looks like it's labeled parcel on the map. Do you know who owns those or what the future might be of those?
Yeah. Those are, those are owned by the Jaclyn family, and that's why we're building, and I should point that out, that, that road to the south will be built before this whole project is done, regardless of what happens with North Idaho College. Because at this point, North Idaho College was only interested in that 14-acre parcel, so we would redevelop the waterfront at some point, if you're not interested in the shop and the office and those types of things downstream. And that lot to the right will be listed this spring. Yeah.
Thank you.
So Bruce had hit on a lot of this, but the site has natural gas, electricity, it'll be hooked to the City of Post Falls sewer, and it has City of Post Falls water. The 150,000 square feet, the main big building, currently does have a fire protection system in it that is supplied, the water's supplied by the City of Post Falls. And in a nutshell, we made a proposal to lease it for 10 years on a net lease, and just, everybody has different definitions of net lease. As Bruce mentioned, to give North Idaho College comfort, we'll be responsible as landlords for the outside structure, the walls, the roof. I've been associated with that building for 29 years, and over that 29 years, because we've maintained it well and kept it up, issues have been minimal, so we're not worried about it. Again, it's how well it's maintained. North Idaho College as a tenant would be responsible for their utilities, naturally. Repairs and maintenance, like mowing the lawn and keeping the landscaping up and whatnot. And I don't want to go down this path, but I think there's a possibility that you wouldn't be paying any property taxes. I know that there's, I don't want to guarantee that, I think that that's an option, you should talk to Mark Lyon about it. So that, and we had it at 33 cents per square foot per month on the 170,000 square feet, and that included, you know, it's millions of dollars of landlord improvements we've just discussed. And then at the end of that, you'd have an option to purchase it for 7.6 million. Later on in that, down below, again, I tried to reiterate that we tried to provide the same level of finish as the other shell proposals, to have more of an apples-to-apples comparison on the shells that are being built. We can get into what we talked about on how you pay for it next, but, you know, there's, we feel there's a lot of compelling reasons why this makes a great site. So with that, I think what I'll do is, the PowerPoint that we went through in the open session, I'll just hit some highlights of those slides, not go through all of them again, like with the history, and talk in a little more depth on the key slides there.
Tom, before you do that, you had talked, I guess I want to make sure that we're, the numbers are something we understand. 33 cents per square foot for the 170,000 square feet, or I think your handout also says 3.94 per square foot on an annual lease. And when I worked that out, that was about $670,000 per year as a rental payment.
Correct.
And over 10 years, that'd be 6.7 million, and then a buyout at the end, if we took the option of 7.6 million.
Correct.
Okay. So a total cost of 14.3 million.
Correct.
All right. I just wanted to make sure that we're.
Yep. And when we get into the PowerPoint, we'll touch on those again.
Can I ask a quick question? Just a question for clarification. In the document, and I was at your original presentation and in the open session, and I'm looking at this, and I've understood the concept of a triple net lease, but then you just used some different terminology and then said you guys would be responsible for the exterior and the roof. Now, my understanding is that isn't, wouldn't be under the definition of a triple net lease.
That's correct, and the reason we're doing that is, it seemed to be a concern that, gee, you have older buildings and whatnot, so we're just taking that burden on. Instead of, you know, an absolute net lease, which we have some of those, you know, you Instead of, you know, an absolute net lease, which we have some of those, you know, you basically are responsible for the whole building as a tenant. But we're willing to take that on, and then you'll see over the 10-year period how low the maintenance is. And, you know, again, we talked about it earlier, about the flexibility we have. If we wanted to talk about putting on the kind of roof that Bruce was talking about and explore that, where it gives you a 30-year guarantee, we could explore that and build it into the lease payment. You know, we'd be very transparent on that. Okay, I'm going to kind of skip through this quickly, because a lot of this we covered before. That's a different view of the site, that it's an aerial view of that same interchange, so that might give you a better feel. It doesn't obviously have the road that's built through it down the bottom, but that's what the freeway interchange will look like when it's finished. And these are just pictures of the building, most people are familiar with them. And again, the reason that we showed this picture, this was RGU's view of what the inside of the building looked like, and again, it fits what we have very well. It's great, big, clear-spanned, open space that allows you to flex your programs as they grow, contract over time. You guys have seen it. For an example, look at how few students you have in construction right now. If you would have backed up a few years ago, that was a much bigger program. It allows you to flex the programs. That's just a summary of what we had before. That's the site. We kind of luck, the mayor condoned that. So, and I do want to say, you know, even as a kid, when I came across the freeway, it was kind of the gateway to Idaho. And I think NIC could be the gateway to Idaho, when you come across that freeway. So again, these were the construction costs, and again, all these are RGU's numbers, not ours. So, and this is for the 30-year program. And I'll do this, it's in the... I'll let Bruce hand out not only the PowerPoint, but you can also hand these out, Bruce. So what we did is, the detail of this proposal is, are in these handouts, and they're just RGU's numbers, and we're just summarizing them. So I know there's been a lot of discussion about, are the numbers from RGU accurate? But they're the only numbers we have. So that's the construction costs. And as the chairman pointed out, this is the 10-year lease cost. All these are in thousands of dollars, so it's not quite 6.7 million for the lease price. And then, again, as you pointed out, chairman, this would be the purchase option at the end. So to get to kind of an apples-to-apples, if you will, there's the, I call it the subtotal of the cost. What are you looking for? I think that's it. Oh, yeah. Sorry. So the only difference that isn't apples-to-apples, all the other ones are just construction costs. You have to bear in mind that our cost includes NIC having 14 acres of prime real estate property. None of the other sites have the addition of the 14 acres of land. Yeah?
Your number doesn't include any build-out of the inside of the facility, though?
Yes, it does. It's all of RGU's build-out of everything for the 30-year program. It's apples-to-apples. So this is, this is a 30-year build-out. And RGU, again, didn't have the time to do the 10-year comparison. You know, they did a 10-year build-out for all the other sites, and then a 30-year look. And they only did a 30-year look for the seed company site, and I'm making the supposition that they did that because there was 30 years' worth of space there, so they said, here's what it would look like at 30 years. So, again, this is just a summary from before, and I was trying to look at it, I'm kind of a, I'm a recovering accountant, a numbers guy, and if I was running a business and saying, okay, what's my cash going out the door? If you bonded the other ones, that was assuming a 5% bond cost to put the bond together, and the bond people here could probably tear me apart and say it's not a good number, but I just used that number, and I used a 2% fixed interest rate and a 30-year term. So that's the additional cost of paying back the loan. And if you want some detail on that, I can show you, but it's basically a very basic amortization schedule. So when you look at them, you say, well, there's the total cost, and the Jaclyn seed, from a cash flow point of view, is about half the cost of the other sites. It's maybe 2/3 of it, if you don't take into the bond cost. Because the next step is, we're going to show you how we think you can just pay for this and not go finance it. So there's the 30-year costs. There's the 10-year costs, and again, RGU did not do one for the Jaclyn seed site. The North Campus, Riverbend, and K-Tech, the 10-year plan was about 74% to 76% of what the 30-year plan was. So for lack of anything else, if you wanted to do this and get a comparison for 10 years, we'll use the high end of that at 76%. I think it's lower because all the infrastructure's in place. So 10-year cost to build out, it'd be 19 million. You'd have to do the same 10-year lease, the purchase. The 10-year cost is probably closer to 34 million on the seed company site. Right now, there's 6, at the end of June, so the end of this month, I think there'll be 6.4 million in reserves at the end of June. You're accumulating 2.4 million per year in forgone taxes. So over 10 years, you have about 30 million available. The Jaclyn seed company site's 33 million. You have a shortfall of 3.3 million over 10 years. I can think of a lot of ways to mitigate that. One of the obvious ones is, if you've just now acquired 14 additional acres, you probably have some excess inventory in land. You have 14 acres of shovel-ready land in Riverbend right now, partly through the donation of the Jaclyns. You could sell off some of your existing land to cover the shortfall. We, I'm not going to guarantee any of this, we'd be happy to work with you on funding the buyout or building this out in phases so that your lease rate starts lower, because you don't need to have 170,000 square feet completely insulated and ready to go. You don't need 240 parking spaces right out of the chute. So those are the kind of things we're willing to be flexible on to make this work. Where's Mr. Dorn? Is he back there? If I was him, I'd be a little uncomfortable about committing the entire 2.4 million.
So are we.
If it's something less than that, and there's a smaller amount, you feel like you can commit, and when I listen to Mr. Hammond, it sounds like the more skin you put in the game, the better chance you have of getting other sources of funding. You know, those are the types of things we'd be happy to get into more detail with, to work with you on. So our summary was, we think we can explore this without having to get a bond. We think it's about half the cost. I know that you have to go through an accreditation program, so I know you won't start this fall. But when you're ready to start, this is ready to go, and the one common thing I'm hearing is the need with a backlog of students wanting to get into these programs, we can get that done. And again, I'll reiterate our flexibility on trying to work with you on what's important. So from there, we're open for questions.
Kristi?
Yeah, you're very accurate that we wouldn't want to probably commit our entire reserves because we have so many other needs. And right now, that is our only revenue stream to try to address some of those needs. And so what about a longer lease?
Sure.
How long?
Well, since it's not my...
She's going to negotiate with you right here.
Since it's not my building, any of this outside, just so you know, what we proposed to you was vetted by the Jaclyn family. Having been with them for 29 years, I have a feel for what may or may not be acceptable. So I say, sure, I think that they would look at a longer lease. How long? I can't tell you. If it's 15 years, that would give you lots more runway, that's probably something we talk about. Trying to think, they would be, you know, around 90. They might be, you know, but I don't, you know, I think that would be workable, those types of things. Or the buyout at the end on the 7.6 million. If you have so much money coming in per year, how many years would it take at a low-interest contract to pay that off instead of having to come up with it at the end? Those kinds of things are what I think we can be flexible on.
Any other questions? Tom and Bruce, thank you very much for that.
Okay.
Appreciate that. Okay. Jan? Thank you very much for coming on reasonably short notice and without any warning about what we needed from you, but essentially, if you could help us with understanding a little bit what Panhandle Area Council does, how you might be able to fit into our inquiry in terms of how we can fund these projects.
Well, I'm delighted to be here, and thank you, Ken. I very much appreciate that you've given us the opportunity to create a little bit better exposure for PAC, because I found out that we need to do that. Just as a matter of a little bit of background, for those folks that may not know, PAC's been around for about 41 years. And the mission in life for PAC is to be economic development and job creation in the five northern counties. Historically, we've accomplished that in a number of ways. Most of the time, that involves a community partnership of some kind. It's pretty rare that we're doing any kind of a standalone support unless it's a pretty small kind of a transaction. Before I go into those details, let me just describe a little bit about the details. I think most of you probably know Jim Deffenbach, he's been the leader of the PAC there for, I think, about 30 years. Jim is in the process of retiring, and we have a new executive director who's been on board officially, well, since the first of May, but he's been gone two weeks, that was on a pre-commitment. So I've been with PAC for not quite a year, and we have a brand-new CFO person who's been there for about 10 days. So we are on a serious learning curve as far as how to manage the existing book of business, but let me say this, one of the claims to fame for PAC has always been figuring out a pretty creative way to get something done. If we don't know already to begin with, we go out there, and Jim especially in the past has been very instrumental in that sort of thing. We fully expect to be perpetuating that legacy. So as an example, I found out recently that Jim pretty much single-handedly created the mechanism for the five northern counties to be able to do industrial revenue bonds. I asked him about that firsthand, because I didn't know anything about industrial revenue bonds, and so that's just an example of one of the things that's been done in the past, although not recently. We have, I would say, currently about three different approaches to support for community projects. One of the big ones is grant funding. We have a staff person on board whose name is Nancy Maybille, she's been doing grants for about 27 years. I chatted with her a little bit about, before coming tonight, and it's, there's a possibility that there could be some grant resources available. She is very adept at researching what options might be out there, knows where there's likely, where the brick walls are, and where the maybes might be. I know you have a grant writer on staff, or at least I understand that you do, but that's a resource that we may be able to provide. Again, the community partnership thing, and along the lines of what Jim was saying, and Bruce and Tom, as far as the community partnership adding pieces to the puzzle. Another element that we do, as a matter of course, are loan programs, but all the loan programs that we have currently in place preclude education and nonprofit purposes as far as borrowers are concerned. So doesn't mean we couldn't go out and look for possibilities there as far as the loan programs that we currently exercise, but generally speaking, I'm going to say that's not likely to be an approach going forward. So what that leaves us with is the program that we have supported political entities and municipalities with, and that's what we call the loan-to-own kind of a program. Currently, we have 19 projects in the five northern counties that involve municipalities, school districts, fire districts, city parks, a number of different ones. And the mechanism there is, we acquire the asset, we borrow from, and that's usually, that's in conjunction with a bank loan, we become the owner and the lessor, and we turn around and lease that asset to the political entity on one-year renewable operating leases. Typically, those end with, you buy it back at the end of, with a dollar at the end of a 20-year term. In the context of the magnitude of the projects here, my guess is, we're going to hear about some funding mechanisms that'll be able to reach a little further than what PAC has done historically, but we are also able to entertain non-real estate kinds of assets with that mechanism, equipment perhaps. Maybe a piece of the puzzle could be PAC entertaining a lend-lease, loan-to-own kind of a package involving equipment that we acquire and then make available back to the school. That, again, would involve a bank loan. Banks typically want to see about a 25% equity position in whatever the asset is that's being acquired, I'm told, that it has to be at least, or at least a 15% equity position, or they end up with some reporting requirements that they typically aren't willing to live with. So I'd say that, in a nutshell, kind of tosses out the mechanisms that we've used historically. We're certainly more than excited and willing to go to the drawing board to see what else we can find if it's appropriate to do that. One of the things I'd like to mention is, because of the community partnerships that we do engage in, that's our revenue source, the mission, of course, is economic development and job creation in the five northern counties, and economic development frequently means what we call technical assistance. And for that, unless we have some grant funding to come along, if we aren't booking loans or writing grants and getting the administration to go along with it, we don't get the income, any income from the technical assistance side of our mission. So any part of, any puzzle that's out there that we can participate in helps us and promotes our capability to support the community in the region. So any questions? Anything I can help with on that?
Go ahead. Well, I remember, I was on the K-12 school board.
Okay.
And Panhandle Area Council was very helpful when we acquired the building on Walnut? Is it Walnut?
Yes.
Our meeting facility.
Yes. That's one of the ones we have currently still.
Yeah, so I'm trying to remember, though, it seemed like it was a pretty quick turnaround when we approached PAC and said, can you help us? And so, just some kind of timeframe, if we were to approach you, what are we looking at?
I'm not sure I could answer that. It depends on the nature of the asset and the complexity of the transaction. It would involve council's advice on your end, because there are some differences of opinion as to the propriety of the mechanism that's used. They're all, so there's always a need for you to get your council to say that they're in agreement with the approach. I would say it's pretty short-term, I mean, probably a couple, three months. We have to, if I would, if we're not taking a position in real estate, we are not hung up with a commercial real estate appraisal. If we're buying equipment, there's a purchase price, so we have value, and frequently, the appraisal is part of the part that takes some time. Opinion of council, that's their ball to toss, and beyond that, it's a board approval on our end. We don't even have to go to loan committee on these transactions, so it can be fairly fast, if need be.
Okay.
Thank you.
Tom?
Couple of questions, I guess. You were talking about the size and scope of the project. What would be, I don't know, just an order of magnitude, typical transaction size that you would be involved with?
The transactions we have on the books now range from 750, I'm sorry, 70,000 to 2.5 million. I guess it would be fair to say we probably can't take the whole chunk.
That's okay. And I have a couple of following questions. When you... When you do the, the leaseback, and you said maybe a dollar at the end to complete the purchase, what's your typical timeline for that, for the amortization? 10, 15, 20 years? How long do you guys carry that note?
We can certainly talk about that, and that's gonna be, at least in some part, a function of what the underlying bank loan is willing to go, but most likely in the neighborhood of seven to 10 years.
Okay. Now, I don't understand where you guys get your funding. I'm not terribly familiar with, with Panhandle Area Council. So say we have the $5 million, and we do, uh, I'm just gonna keep the math simple, 10-year note. Would I expect then that I'm gonna be paying you $500,000 every year in my leaseback, so I get you broke even there, and you're covering the interest, and then I give you the dollar just to consummate the transaction?
You're gonna pay the loan payments. That's gonna be, the lease is gonna be the loan payments plus, plus a monthly fee to us for handling the transaction.
So, okay, then you're acting as an intermediary to secure the loan-
Right.
But you're not actually, don't take this wrong, I'm just, but you're not actually providing any financial support or help with the actual numbers?
That's correct.
Okay.
But you could, you could consider negotiating the exact same transaction on your own with a direct lender, but you'd have to get one-year renewable loans.
Right, 'cause of our-
We booked the one-year renewable leases, recognizing, and this is the risk for us, if for some reason you guys decide not to continue to use the facility, we get to keep making the loan payments to the bank until we can find another tenant. And we have a history of success at providing that kind of, we've had a couple of those, actually. As surprising as that might seem for how we typically, the kinds of projects that we typically fund, but because we've had that success, and we're gonna look at a project that has the potential to find, you know, another tenant in most cases.
Now, you could-
Now, now, I'm talking equipment in this case, so that gets a little sketchier, because we gotta make sure we gotta market for equipment, if in fact, that's the way we end up working.
Now, you could potentially underwrite some of the cost if we were to secure a grant, for example, or something. So you have a grant writer maybe out there looking for some money that would help us with those repayments?
We can assist with finding the grant resource, and typically, the way we get paid on, on the grants historically has been, we will write the grant, and then we get involved with the grant administration for compensation.
Okay.
So how that would work in this project, we'd need to get to more level of detail, and I'd need the grant person here to tell you about it, because it's not my world.
No, that's okay. I was just trying to get a, just a basic understanding of what the process is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Jan? Jan, thank you very much for the overview and letting us know, um, a little bit better how Panhandle Area Council functions and how it might assist us.
Well, and we certainly appreciate the opportunity, and again, in, in any way, there's a way for us to participate. We very much would be interested in doing that.
Thank you. The, the next, um, individual I have is, or entity is the NIC Foundation, and Tim Combrecht is here. Tim, I don't know if there's anything at this point in time, I basically invited the foundation here because I wanted you to be able to hear what we hear. Uh, you have been a great friend and source for many of our projects, and so I didn't know if there was anything that you feel that you can add to this discussion at this time.
Well, I think that the trustees must have a pretty good understanding of what the capability of the foundation is. I mean, you paid, you brought projects to us over in the past, everything from us purchasing these financing buildings for you to us being a conduit to allow purchases to happen, uh, and then also the fundraising arm, which is, a good example is the capital campaign for the Meyer Health and Science Building that we went through, where you were able to get the building built by using the same funds, but we were, had a shortfall for the equipment in it, and we were able to go out and do a very successful capital campaign for that. So, and Steve Myers here also, who's on the board, but my feeling is, is that we are open to ideas. It looks like there are a lot of things that could be done here, and we kind of board best, I think, if someone helps us with a specific ask, would be for us to take a look at, and something, see if we can help bridge gap or help with part of it. The one thing we can't do is, we can't leverage our downed funds, the money that's, the money that are given to us, we won't use for projects, even though we have, uh, a good-sized balance, those 100% sometimes. I would suggest that the trustees come to us with specific, if you try formulating an idea, we'd be very happy to discuss, even all ideas that you have, where we might be able to assist.
Okay. Any questions of Tim? Thank you very much. Yes, Danielle Quade, you, and I'll let you just sort of emcee the presentation here, because you have several aspects of it. I think that you, you brought people to help us understand bonding and finances.
Okay, I'm Danielle Quade with Holly Troxel. I know most of you, um, but for those of you that I don't know, Holly Troxel is a law firm based out of Boise. Um, you should have some information in front of you about the firm and about our municipal finance practice group. Um, I am lucky enough to be cited here in Coeur d'Alene and supported by a large group of very strong attorneys in Boise, so I feel like I sort of have the best of both worlds in terms of, uh, big law firm support, and I get to be up in this beautiful place with my family. So, um, to start off, we were asked to give sort of an overview, I'd say it's like a, you know, 30,000-foot view of what your financing alternatives are for both of these projects. And as we go through, I'm gonna kind of, I'll tell you, you know, which project I think these different financing tools are best used for, and stop me if you have questions. And then, um, following me are a couple of gentlemen from Seattle Northwest Securities, and they're here to get more into the numbers. Um, we, Ken gave us some numbers to work with in terms of best estimates to show you what different financing tools, you know, what, what the interest rate looks like with the different types of financing tools, and different amortizations, or different amounts of time that they're outstanding, and that kind of thing. So if you'd save the numbers questions for them, that'd be best. Everyone says, you know, never take, uh, financial advice from your lawyer. So the first thing we're gonna do is, uh, look at some financing alternatives. I apologize for it being small. I tried to get them to make it bigger, and they said it was impossible. So the first and perhaps, um, you know, most well-known financing tool is the general obligation bond. So that's where, um, the college would seek a bond, uh, through an election, call a bond election, and it would require a two-thirds vote. So that's the real uphill part of that battle, is that you'd have to convince the electorate in Cootney County or District, um, to support a two-thirds vote. That being said, I think with the, the set aside funds that you have, that $2.4 million of tax, existing tax levy that you would use at least some portion of to support this bond, I think you have a good story to tell the public. Because you can, even though a general obligation bond requires that you are able to levy if you need to, and that's what makes the credit so good, you're not required to levy a new tax. So you could go to them and say, we have this existing levy, we're gonna pledge that to the bonds, but we still need your authority to issue the bonds. So I think that there is a story to tell the public there in selling a bond election. And the upside to a bond election is that it definitely offers the most favorable rates and costs, and you'll see that when Seattle Northwest goes over the numbers with you. So the second financing tool is a lease financing, and some of you who have been on the board for a while have seen this tool in action here. Um, the lease between the foundation and the college is how the mill site was purchased. The complexity that's added with a lease transaction is that for us to be able to give an unqualified bond opinion in the marketplace, we have to have a very high level of certainty that that lease is not a debt or obligation under Article 8, Section 3, which is the constitutional provision that prohibits debt for municipalities and other public instrumentalities in Idaho. So to do that, because there's no case law on this issue in Idaho, in about 46 states, an annual appropriation lease has been tested and found not to be a debt under the constitutional provision, but here in Idaho, that's not the case. So we would require you to seek a judicial confirmation, which is a process where we draft the documents, and then we take them and put them before a district court judge and ask them to say whether or not it's a debt or, or an obligation under Article 8, Section 3. So that's the, I would say, the uphill battle of the lease transaction.
Does that take very long?
I would say in the neighborhood of four to six months. Can go a little bit quicker if the stars align, but there are times in there where you're subject to the judge's calendar. So both of those methods, I would say, are, I think that's, if you're looking into financing, those are the two tools that you'd probably be looking at for your professional technical building, either the general obligation bond or the lease type financing. And I'm gonna get into a little bit more detail about these later, and we'll talk about how the Jaclyn lease folds in to the discussion of a lease-type structure. Um, but turning to the next method, the next method is a student fee bond, and the only way that community colleges can really do that under the statute right now is through your dormitory housing commission. And I've worked with you all on a couple of refundings of your dormitory housing commission bonds, but basically, how that works is the dormitory housing commission actually acts as the issuer of the bonds, and what they use to secure those bonds are the fees and revenues generated from the facilities. So right now, existing, we have the student union and the dormitories, and, you know, if you were to build a student center or a student rec center, that would also fit in there, any revenue generated from that, and then that student union fee that is, um, set and assessed by the college. So that's what would be pledged, and so, um, to do that, you would obviously have to increase that student fee, as the students are asking you to do, um, to generate the coverage required by the existing bond documents to add another facility to those bonds. So then the last method, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on, because, uh, Mr. Hammond was here and spoke a little bit about that, and that's the Idaho State Building Authority. And, you know, the real advantage of the Idaho State Building Authority, if you can get on, um, you can get the support of the legislature, is that they do bring, you know, new funds that don't come from your tax base and don't come from your existing budget. There's not much of a benefit to using the building authority unless they're gonna bring their own funds, because you can do a lease transaction more simply with a local kind of conduit issuer. So talking a little bit more in detail about general obligation bonds, the process would be that you would seek an election, like I said, you could seek that on the basis of using your existing levy, or with a general obligation bond, you can seek additional authority for a new levy. Obviously, that's harder for the taxpayers to swallow. And although you, you tell them that, and you commit to the electorate not to use those existing, or not to use additional authority, the, the big thing with the credit is that if you needed to, if the college, if push came to shove and the college couldn't make the payment otherwise, you would be required to levy to pay those payments, and you would have authority to do so based on the bond election. And then, of course, there's that, you know, that big two-thirds number, which we've seen be achievable in this community of late, so I think there's some hope there. So the timing of the election with the election consolidation law, this is probably old news to everyone, but, um, now there's only two opportunities for, um, community colleges to have elections. So it would be the third Tuesday in May or the Tuesday following the first Monday in November. So moving on to the annual appropriation lease structure, um, and stop me if I'm going into too much detail, or if you've heard too much about this, but, so the premise behind an annual appropriation lease is that it only creates an annual obligation, right? So you're only making, you're only obligating the board, the board each year only is obligating itself to pay the payment for that year. And so in any additional year, you would have the choice about whether or not to appropriate funds to make that payment. But we all know, in, in the real world, you're most likely going to continue to make the payments towards something that at the end of the day, you're going to own. You know, you've put investment into it. And, but still, you know, there is the, there is the limitation, that the college could make the decision not to, not to appropriate, which makes it, in our view, an annual and not an ongoing obligation. However, as I said, the Supreme Court hasn't had that, made that ruling, and we hope someday they will, um, so we can't give that unqualified bond opinion. So what we would do, the process is that we would file a petition with the district court, and then they would hold a hearing and take, um, you know, potentially take protests from other people. There's a public hearing required by you first, before you decide to file, and then there's a public hearing in front of the judge, where people can show up and protest, or, you know, submit evidence, or ask questions, or just give their opinion on what, you know, whether or not something is, uh, whether or not it is a debt. And then the judge makes a decision, and following that decision, if it was favorable, we could, uh, complete the financing. So keeping all of that in mind, with the lease obligation that's being proposed by Jaclyn, I think that that option makes a lot of sense and could be done, as they say, without another financing, so long as that was actually structured as a true lease. Because if you're getting into a situation where it looks like a lease to purchase, which is essentially what a judicial, what we would judicially validate if you were going with the, with an annual appropriation lease, say with, like, the foundation, like we did for the mill site, or you could use Panhandle Area Council as your issuer, or frankly, sometimes even a bank will act as that issuer, and then they, you know, lease you, you lease them the facility, they lease it back to you. But with the Jaclyn, with the Jaclyn proposal, so long as it really looks like and is a true lease, where you're just leasing it for fair market value, and you receive that value each year as you make the payment, and then at the end of the day, you pay fair market value, which I think is what that $7.6 million option is meant to be, I think that that would be a lease that even if you received a challenge, which I think is something that you should contemplate and potentially expect in the event you went forward with that kind of a transaction. I think it's very defensible.
While you're there, Tom, did you have a comment you wanna make or ask a question?
Yeah, we, you know, we currently lease to NIC, and we have that language about we can get out any time, and that's what we're given, and I should have stated that-
That's right.
That we're willing to take the risk that you can walk away.
Okay, thank you. I hope I didn't interrupt you and lose your turn, Tom.
No, I, I mean, that's absolutely fine, and I, so I just wanna, I guess, bring that to the table, that distinguishable from the lease that I'm talking about where you would validate, that's a structure where it really is a lease to purchase ultimately, and everybody knows that, but still, because you're able to get out of it year by year by year, if you need to, if the budget so requires and the board's will is such, then you can. But that's different than a, a real lease, where you're actually just get value every year, and then at the end, you can, you know, the option is at fair market value rather than for a dollar. I mean, that's where, when the, when the, at the end of the day, you get it for a dollar, the judge is like, this isn't, this isn't a true lease. You know, this is a lease purchase. You've paid all your value ahead of time, and now you own it for a dollar because you've paid for it. Does that make sense, that distinction?
Thank you.
So, um, I, I've covered this, but, you know, the diff, so we wanna make sure when we're structuring this lease, that you can, you can terminate it each year and that there's no downside to doing it. Like, that was a big consideration when we financed the mill site, that you, you can't put a big down payment on something and then say it's a true lease. Or you can't give them the property to build your project and then non-appropriate, because you lose the property if you don't appropriate. Does that make sense? So those are the things that we have to contemplate when we're structuring something of this nature. And because of the risk, the annual risk that you wouldn't appropriate, um, the costs are higher, and that's something that Seattle Northwest will talk about, too. So moving on to the dormitory housing commission and thus the rec center financing, um, the dormitory housing commission is kind of a unique statutory animal, and, but it's empowered to issue bonds on behalf of NIC for these very limited purposes, for dorms and student unions and student centers. And as I covered, you know, the pledge of the, the pledge is on those bonds, net revenues generated by any of those facilities, and the student union fee. So currently, the college and the, how the DHC are, have an agreement that governs their relationship, and the way that agreement is set out, the dormitory housing commission approves and sets the residence hall and student union budget, and then you approve and set the fee that supplements that budget, and then on behalf of the dormitory housing commission, because they have no staff, Ron and his team administer things in those buildings and do the upgrades and maintenance, and, you know, collect all the revenues and all of those things. But it's actually, by law, those facilities are owned at this point by the dormitory housing commission and then utilized and managed by the college. So to issue additional bonds, the dormitory housing commission would have to authorize those, but, but that actual, the actual work is- those, but that actual, the actual work is done by the NIC staff on their behalf, based on that agreement. So just to point out a couple of key features to the agreement between the college and the dormitory housing commission, we talked about how the college sets the fee and the dormitory housing commission sets the budget and the fees for the actual facilities, and that the college supports and administers on behalf of the DHC and operates and manages the building. The one thing that isn't on here that I think is notable is that the college has entered into a lease with the housing commission for those facilities, for the ground, and then, and then we have the opportunity to use them, you know, based on that agreement with the dormitory housing commission. And that's what would happen, again, if you were to lease, you'd have to lease the piece of property where the rec center would be built to the dormitory housing commission, they'd build it, and then the students would have the opportunity and use of it, and it would be managed by the college the same way the dorms and the student union are. Does that make sense?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay. Then, if what I just heard is the DHC would actually be the one that would be sponsoring the bond, then?
That's absolutely true. The DHC is the issuer of the bond, but the bond is secured by revenues from these facilities, which are actually DHC facilities at this time, plus the student union fee, which is set and collected by you.
Okay, well, let me ask you a strange question, then. Do we have approval authority over that, or can DHC do that regardless of what we say and do?
Well, I can tell you that DHC doesn't have the revenues without an increase to the student union fee to issue debt for the rec center.
Okay, but who's in charge of approving that fee? My understanding is it was brought to us by the students, Mr. Stanley and the students have come to us, but yet we've had to refer back to the DHC as the governing authority on that, that they actually have the approval of that fee, or am I misunderstanding that process?
That is not correct. The fee is approved and set by the Board of Trustees of the college. It's a college fee, but statutorily, when you have bonds existing under a dormitory housing commission, that fee is pledged to the bonds. So you are the decider of what the fee is. But then the fee does secure the outstanding, you know, you have two bond issues outstanding right now, and this would be a third bond issue for the rec center added on.
So if we, they came to us and said, we want 100 bucks a year per student, then we have that approval authority?
Yes.
Is there self-tax in themselves?
Danielle, worst-case scenario, a college loses their accreditation, and so you see a major drop-off in enrollment. And then we're looking at, we're leasing the land, they own the building, and what if we can't, the payments can't be made? What happens to that?
I think you would have to raise the fee and raise the, probably raise the housing rates and student union rates to cover the bonds. You pledge in the documents to have the fee high enough to make the coverage on the bonds.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm still thinking about it.
All right. Can we go ahead while you're thinking?
Oh, I know.
Paul, Judy.
It came back, it came back. We then, as a college, having said, yep, we're going to collect a fee from the students, we're going to promise to pay it to DHC so that, therefore, we've promised that, so if we come upon hardship, financial hardship times, we can't take that money and use it anywhere else.
Statutorily, that fee exists for the benefit of DHC bonds, yes. It's an odd one. It's different than all your other fees. I mean, so it's not, it's not how you're used to having your, you know, having your fees be more of a pool that can be used for a lot of different purposes.
This is sort of an aside, but let me, let me posit the hypothetical that the fees generate a profit, so there's a positive balance in the account. Is that money can only be used for the student services activities, or can it be used for NIC's needs?
I, the way that it's treated right now, it's restricted.
Restricted to the student services.
Ron could probably speak up better than that, than me on that, but those funds are held for use for the student union and dormitory housing.
We would approve that, but we can't be bought right into the debt.
Refenced.
We just pay it off faster.
Right. Okay, thank you.
They can be used for maintenance, and I know that that has happened on this building and the dorms. So they're, it can be used for capital for these facilities, the existing DHC facilities.
But the fee can be adjusted by the Board of Trustees, down or up. If we are obliging too much, it can be adjusted down. So we still have control over the operating.
Let me try one more of that, then.
Judy.
Therefore, if, as you mentioned, there's some deferred maintenance or something that we know is going to come up, can we tuck that away and stockpile it in anticipation of the new roof, the new whatever, with, for the same facility that the bond is?
The same facility, yeah.
Yep. Can we switch it within the facility, since there are several that have a DHC?
Yes, they're all subject to a parity pledge, so all the funds support all of the DHC facilities.
So it's just one big pot of money?
For dormitory and student union, yeah.
Hands off.
I don't know how big. Big may be a relative term.
Yeah, I don't know if it's a big pot. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of information about the statutory powers of the DHC. They have broad power, which enables them to, you know, acquire and operate and lease these types of projects, construct them, contract for management, which is what they do with you, they contract for you, the college, to manage them on their behalf, and to issue the bonds. And then people always ask, they always want to squeeze in, you know, something under the auspices of the DHC that doesn't fit because of how restricted you are on financing otherwise, with having to, you know, seek the judicial validation or seek the two-thirds vote. So I always include this slide, which really defines what the dormitory projects and student union, student center projects can encompass. And you'll see about halfway down in the student union, student center, is the magical word recreation, which is what allows us to finance a student rec center under this umbrella. So I think that, oh, and then one more slide that we've already covered in terms of what the actual pledge is, of the student fees as imposed by statute, and then the net revenues of the projects. And grants and contributions. So if you were to be able to get some state money, a federal grant, you know, that PAC could help you with, something like that, you could include those in that pledge as well. That's all I have right now. If you have any questions, I'd certainly be happy to answer them.
Any further questions on Danielle? Thank you very much. Who's next?
The patient ones.
Well, good evening, Chairman Howard, members of the board. My name's Dick Schobr, I'm a managing director at Seattle Northwest Securities. This is my colleague, Michael Keith. Both Michael and I work with Eric Harringer, who I think you've met, some of you have at least met before.
Could you speak up just a little bit?
Certainly. Eric is with the state of Idaho and in New York City, meeting with the rating agencies right now, so he's apologizes for not being able to be here, but he's, he's working for the state, so.
Thank you.
Some of what we have in this presentation probably is going to be a little bit redundant with what was just discussed, but we'll try to, I'll try to glaze over that, and I am apologizing for the size of the font up there as well. This is a little bit of background on our firm. Seattle Northwest Securities is a 42-year-old employee-owned firm. We are one of the largest underwriters in the state of Idaho, have been for many years. Last year, we were the largest underwriter in the state of Idaho, doing just about $2.2 million, or billion dollars' worth of bond underwriting in 93 separate transactions, one of which was for the Dormitory and Housing Commission. So I guess I won't, I won't dwell on this page. One thing that you should be aware of is that we were recently acquired by Piper Jaffrey. Piper Jaffrey is based in Minneapolis. That transaction will close in the middle of July, will not impact any of the public finance staff. I manage the public finance staff for Seattle Northwest Securities, so we are retaining all the personnel. We're retaining our Boise office and our staff there, as well as our other offices around the Northwest. There's very little overlap with Piper Jaffrey, so we're excited about some of the resources that they're going to bring to our firm, additional capital and some other products that might be helpful for our clients, so. If you flip to, keep driving here, Mike. Good, that would help me. The second page, I'm going to break this, sort of the upper half of the page, on the, on the left side is the general obligation bullet points, and then the right side is lease revenue bonds, and these, as Danielle pointed out, would be most applicable to the tech facility. I think a couple of things that I want to underscore, and that these are mostly on the credit side, as Danielle said, that the difference between the two from an investor's perspective is that with the GO bonds, you are obligating to tax, if necessary, up to the full amount of debt service, and that tax creates a strong pledge to bondholders and also will convey, in this case, we're estimating a double A to credit rating, which is just two notches below triple A, which is the highest credit rating, and would be a very strong credit to sell on the market and therefore convey lower interest cost for that particular bond, bond issue. As Danielle pointed out, you do not need to levy the tax, you can use it as a, as a, you can use your forgone tax levy, which I believe is no longer forgone, but is somewhat categorized as that still, for capital purposes. You can use that to pay the debt, but you are obligating to, if for whatever reason financial conditions changed at the university, you needed to use that general fund money for other purposes, you are obligating to levy that tax and pay that debt service until it's fully amortized. The lease revenue bonds, on the other hand, do not create any new revenue source, so that's, that's the key there. There's no new revenue source. It is an obligation that is subject to annual appropriation, and so from, again, I'm going to speak from an investor's perspective, what they're going to look at is how essential is the facility to the university? The more essential, the more likely that you'll appropriate on an annual basis for that asset. If it's something that, you know, a golf course, and I'm going to use the golf course analogy later, you know, not as essential, could easily be, you know, cut from a budget if times were difficult. So that's, that's how investors will look at this, and that is why we're estimating a high single A rating, A1 on that particular credit, could be a little bit higher, might be a little bit lower, our best guess is A1 right now. So that's a full two notches below the voter-approved general obligation tax levy, and that will convey a higher cost of interest to those bonds versus the GO bonds. Just looking at my notes here, I think that's, that's all I want to cover there. Switching to the student facility fee bonds?
Could I interrupt and ask you a question? I know it may be difficult to put numbers on it, but when you say a higher interest for the A1 versus the AA2, give us some idea of what?
I'm going to, I'm going to do that on the next slide. If that's okay?
Ready.
Just have patience.
Bear with me. That's what I tell my children, and I wouldn't tell that to you, though, sir. Switching to the student facility fee bonds, that is what we call a revenue bond, and so you've got, you've got your housing facility revenues and your student facility fee revenues that are all pledged to pay that debt service. And generally, what we're looking for in that type of a credit, again, is, is essentiality of service, and as long as the university's operating, you know, those, the things that we're talking about here are fairly essential, housing and, you know, some reasonable recreational activities for the students. And, and we look at debt service coverage ratios on those particular transactions, and that is, how much revenue are you bringing in and covering your operating costs and then have available to also cover debt service? You need to operate, you need to continue operating these facilities to collect revenue, so operation is key, so that's, that's the first thing that we cover, then debt service, and then what's left over at the end. And what your pledge is, I believe, Michael, correct me if I'm wrong, it's a 1.25 times minimum that you've, that you've pledged to set rates and charges for the housing facilities and for, and student fees that will be sufficient to cover your operating costs and pay debt service plus 25%. That's the minimum, the market would expect something greater than that, they want a margin over that, something like 150. I believe last year you were operating at 180. So as we get into the numbers later, we're going to try to put those things, this new facility and the amount of debt that you're talking about in context with that 1.80 ratio that you operated at in 2012. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Flip? All right. Answering Chairman Howard's question, so on the top, is a graphic of current, well, the, what we call the MMD 20-year bond index, and that is a rate for a, the highest grade triple A municipal bond in the, with a 20-year term. It's generally used as a proxy for the market. A 20-year term, I'm going to, I'm going to stay out of the weeds, but it's a good proxy for the tax-exempt market. You can see on the far right of that, the current rate roughly is 3% for a 20-year MMD bond. If you move to the graph down below, if you imagine as baseline, that top graph, the timeline, the X-axis doesn't match up, but baseline is that MMD 20-year rate, and then those area graphs above it are the incremental interest cost above the MMD 20-year rate. So the dark blue represents double A credit above that rate, and you can see, and it's probably, if I estimated it, probably about 20, 25 basis points or 1/4 of 1% out on the far right side, equi, you know, so about three, instead of 3%, about 3.25 for the, for the double A credit. And you can see as, as you get weaker and weaker credits, that credit spread widens and widens, and at various times in the market, it might be narrow, narrower, it gets wider or narrower depending on market conditions. As we've seen rates go down and, and interest rates compress, what we see, we call it interest rate compression, and people are reaching for yield, they're looking for, you know, a little bit, gee, I just, you know, if I could only get, instead of 3, 3 and 1/4%, they may look to buy a lower-rated bond to get that additional yield, and when that demand spikes for that type of bond, then we see those credit spreads narrow. At other times, people are scared, they're worried about getting their money back, you see these wide credit spreads. You can see the really wide credit spreads that we saw during the financial crisis back in '08 on this graph. So hopefully, that kind of, that answers your question. Right now, you know, between a double A versus a straight triple A, double A, and maybe a low single A, probably anywhere from 25 to 100 basis points, or 1/4 of 1% to one full percentage point for the lower end of that credit spectrum. This is a little bit more detail on credit, and the top part of the, the general description there talks about the Moody's comments on North Idaho College generally. And then if you look at the specifics on the, down below, we've got specifics on the three different types of credits that we're talking about, the general obligation, the lease revenue bonds, and the student fee bonds. And for general obligation, you've got a pretty low debt burden overall in the region. This would be a fairly minor increase to that debt burden. You've got a very diverse tax base, so probably not much of a credit issue. For the lease revenue bonds, again, we're going to be looking at essentiality of the facility, you know, how much is the lease of your overall operating budget, because, again, we're not creating any new revenues here. You know, and how, how well have you managed your finances over the years? Again, this is moving to a credit that is much more drilled down on management of the, of the, of the university and overall operations and enrollment. On the student, student fee bonds, I'm going to use the, the golf course analogy is not a great analogy, but I, it's important to understand this because there is a limit to how much fee you can actually set there, and the market will determine what that limit is. It's sort of a, it's a reality test, right? We're not talking about water and sewer service here. People will pay to have their water work and their toilets flush. There is a point at which you can't There is a point at which you can't raise student fees any further, and we've not done any analysis on this. I've kind of done some back-of-the-envelope, and Michael and I can maybe give you a rough idea of what we think it would take. But there is a point at which the market will say, nah, that doesn't make sense. There's no way they can have $1,000 a year student fees for a rec center. So, I just wanted to emphasize that, so you guys are thinking about it from that perspective. And the alternative then is, you know, you do need to look to the state for funding or grants for funding, or, you know, the foundation or other sources to try to buy down that student fee component. Does that make sense?
In the marketplace, who makes that determination of whether or not we've saturated the request of the students?
It really is going to be, they're going to look at historically what those fees are, how much it is of their overall tuition, they'll put some metrics on it, and it's individual credit analysts at the large institutional investors that typically buy these bonds. Individuals buy bonds too, but they're not going to be able to drive, you know, a $10 million transaction, or, you know, in the case of the tech facility, a much larger transaction than that. So, you really do need the large institutional investors like casualty insurers or municipal bond funds to participate in a transaction when you get into that $10 million range and plus. So...
At what point in the process does that assessment, is that assessment made?
It starts when we start with the credit agencies. They'll give you a good read. I mean, if they think that's just off-base, you're going to get a terrible credit rating. And, you know, frankly, we as individuals and understanding how the market works and what's reasonable will give you that read well before you ever get in front of the credit agencies. But, you know, we want to put together a transaction that's going to sell. We would not put a transaction out there and not have it have some level of market acceptance. So, we will give you good guidance on that.
Yes.
Question for you. I'll use the term downgrade, but that's probably not appropriate, but when we're going from the triple A down to the AA2, and we've come down two levels on the credit rating of the offering, will we have an idea of where our credit rating would be before we go to the public for that vote, requiring that two-thirds for passage? Or is that something that we wouldn't be able to have a good feel for until after we had a voter approval already? Again, I'm trying to put the cart before the horse, I'm trying to understand how much information we would have before we'd go to the voters. And is that a typical bond rating for an education institution like ourselves, or are we high or low because of certain, you know, you've given us some strengths and weaknesses here?
We based that credit rating on the largest school district, I believe it's Coeur d'Alene.
Coeur d'Alene School District.
Coeur d'Alene School District. That's their credit rating. You have a much, you have a larger tax base than that, so that's a plus. So, it may be a little bit conservative, you know, you might be able to get to a double A1, but double A2 is our best estimate. And we work with school districts and other entities all the time, and we do a pretty good job of assessing credit and being able to tell them where we think you're going to fall out in terms of a rating. And we use that to develop interest cost figures that are then used to take to voters. We rarely get into a rating conversation at the voter level, and I can't think of a situation where I've ever been involved with that. So, usually, it's more a function of what's it going to cost, and we build in some margins there in terms of interest cost estimates.
All right. So, we can say per thousand of your home's appraised value after your homeowner exemption, this is what we expect your taxes to increase?
That's exactly right. Yep.
Thank you.
I'm going to turn it over to Mike, and he's going to get in a little bit of the nitty-gritty of the numbers here.
Well, thanks again to the board for having us out here. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you guys. So, it is my job to maybe put some numbers to what we've talked about. And again, as Danielle had discussed, this is some things that we've talked with Ken on what he thought some of these facilities would cost, and both the professional technical facility as well as the recreational facility financing that we're talking about. Here on this first slide, again, apologize for the numbers, we're talking about professional technical facility. And as Dick has already talked about, and Danielle as well, there's really two types of financings that we can consider here. You know, the general obligation bond with your guys' diverse tax base, which is, you know, well over $11 billion. And then, we've got the lease option as well. And this kind of puts some context to the ratings as well. As you can see, that we're proposing that, you know, a general obligation bond with your tax base would be a double A credit, double A2. And with an annual appropriation lease, because, again, we don't have that tax base, we don't have that additional revenue source that we're raising, in this case with the lease, you're coming down a couple notches on the rating. And this kind of gives you that comparison of what that rating may cost you in the market. Let's start with some of the assumptions on the numbers underlying what I put together here. Again, our conversations are that it is the desire of the college to try to use the forgone taxes to repay the debt, that, you know, we're not looking to go out to voters and raise taxes, that we want to try to internalize this with existing funds that we have to repay the bonds. With that, on a $35 million facility, assuming rates essentially of June 5th, you can see that we have three options, repayment options here that we've summarized. Now, a bond can go any length. We can go up to 30 years, we can do 28, we can do something shorter. These are just kind of some common terms that we see in the marketplace that investors are used to, that we're using to compare the two different transactions. You can see on the 15- and 20-year options for both the GO and lease, we've already kind of exceeded that $2.4 million of forgone revenue. You have, and I know in discussions, you guys have other needs for the funds beyond just repaying debt service on the professional technical facility. So, it's likely that you guys would be looking at a 30-year repayment option. When you look at the two different options, a GO and a lease, you can see that we're talking about a half a percent in this case of cost differential. So, a half a percent interest rate cost differential. Of course, the longer you extend that out on the curve, the longer you're paying that, you know, the more that's going to cost you over time on the facility. So, you know, 15-year, that difference is going to be less than versus a 30-year bond, and we summarize some of those costs at the bottom. The other key difference between the general obligation bond and the lease is that because investors are concerned about the limit of the source of repayment, they're going to ask that you guys fund a reserve of at least one year's annual payment at the time of the financing. So, in the case of the 30-year, for the lease, for the lease, correct. So, for the lease on the 30-year option, that's about $2.3 million that would have to be set aside in a reserve fund until the bonds are repaid. Now, that reserve can be used to make the last payment on the bonds, and comparing the cost at the bottom, so for example, for the GO, total cost of $60,377,000, so that's principal and interest over 30 years at 3.88% under current market conditions, versus the lease option, which would be about 4.42% or $68 million total over the 30-year period. That'd be about a $6.2 million difference after you factor in that you would be using that reserve to make that final payment. So, again, we want to subtract that cost out because you guys are financing the reserve, essentially.
Part of that difference that you see in the payment, the plus million versus 2.3 million in that 30-year lease, part of that difference is a product of funding that reserve. We've funded it with the bond issue. So, to be fair, you have to back it out at the end, and we should also back out interest earnings on that. But when you're talking about a percent, percent and a half interest earnings, it's not a whole lot to back out, somewhere around $25,000, $30,000.
Yes, Kristy?
And this, under all scenarios, the interest rates, once they're set, they're set.
Correct, correct. This is not variable rate debt, this is fixed-rate debt we're talking about. So, at the time of pricing, those bonds in the marketplace will be set for the life of the bonds.
Wow.
Go ahead.
As for the cost of the, actually doing the financing, financing cost, not the interest cost, but just the financing cost for what Danielle does, what we do, rating agency cost, you're looking at about 1% to 1.5% of the total bond amount would be what you'd be. And typically, we, and that's included in these costs as well, and it assumes that they get financed, once again, over the life, so you're not paying the cash upfront. It's something that gets wrapped into the actual financing costs of the bonds. And any scenario that we're, that we've summarized below, it assumes that we deliver $35 million of actual project funds after paying costs. So, that, maybe I'll stop there for just a second, just before we move on to the rec facility, see if there's any questions on the professional technical facility financing.
Any of the board members have any questions on the professional technical part of the financing?
One quick question, if I may?
Yeah, please.
When you were talking about having 35 million to put in the ground, as it were, and I'm just looking at the 30-year repayment schedule under the GO column at the 3.88%, and I'm looking at the interest cost of about 28, about 28.8, and the total cost at about 60.4, and I've got 35 to put in the ground, then I'm going to have some underwriting fees and all my legal and various things. Am I giving some money upfront somewhere? Because when I add 35 to 28, I'm at 63. So, what am I missing? Are we making a payment somewhere, coming up with some additional money? Because if I have 35 million to put in the ground and I've got 28.8 million, that puts me at 63.8 if I'm looking at it right, and you have my total cost of 60.4 roughly. Where are my numbers not adding up?
So, for, under the 30-year repayment term, 35, so 63, there's some, there's some additional premium that helps pay some of those costs upfront on the way bonds are sold in our marketplace. That gets in the weeds a little bit, but, and when bonds are issued, there's the return to the investor, which is the...
I need to be fair to you guys, I'm a Series 7.
Okay, oh, perfect, oh, good.
So, I'm thinking other people are going to look at those numbers that are not going to match.
What's, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I'm thinking other people are going to look at those numbers that are not going to match. That's why I brought it up. Oh, if we think we're going too far in the weeds, that's okay.
No, I appreciate that, that's a good comment. So, it's because it assumes that there's premium bonds sold, and that provides extra proceeds for the bonds that lowers the principal amount of the bond. So, you, on the interest side of the bonds, you're going to pay a higher rate of interest because in today's marketplace, because rates are so low, in order for those bonds to, for a 30-year bond, for that to hold its value, investors, particularly institutional investors, are asking for a higher rate, so a higher coupon rate. So, if the prevailing rate, say, is 3.5%, they're saying, well, I'd prefer to pay up for the additional 5% return over the life of the bond, but that also means that they're going to provide you more money upfront as a result in a premium. So, rather than paying you, let's say if they bought $100 million worth of bonds at par, instead of paying that $100 million to you, they're going to pay something more of $105 million. So, they're going to pay an additional $5 million in premium to own those bonds.
Yeah, I was curious, because you talked, in another slide there, talked about bringing up this new one, if we do it for the rec center, to the two previous issues and having those at par, if I saw that correctly.
Parity, parity is different than par.
Meaning the same pledge. What Mike's talking about is very similar to paying points on your home interest. Pay a little bit more upfront to buy down the rate.
You have your origination fee, then your discount.
Exactly. We don't see much discount on market right now.
Any other questions on the professional technical facility part of the presentation?
Okay, so on the recreational facility financing, as Danielle talked about, you guys already have two bonds that have the same pledge. Bonds that both Seattle Northwest Securities helped you guys refinance, the 2008 refinancing that we did for, through DHC, as well as the 2012 financing that we just finished for you guys. So, currently outstanding, there's a little over $6 million with the same pledge that we're talking about, heal for additional $10 million recreational facility to build. And that's where we get into, you know, the coverage analysis that Dick had alluded to earlier. Under those existing bond documents, the pledge to investors were that the DHC, as well as the college, would set rates and charges, fees essentially, at at least 1.25x. And as Dick has already said, that historically, you guys have been well above that coverage, with what you've been able to collect at 1.8x coverage. To give you a little background, when we did the 2012 refinancing, because there was some knowledge that at some point in time, there'd be some future needs for debt, the 2012 refinancing we did, which actually refinanced the 2001 COP bonds that the college owned, those actually matured, or did mature in 2031, but we accelerated that by nine years with that refinancing. A lot of interest cost savings to do that, as well as it fit with the existing payment structure and ability of the DHC, as well as the college to repay those bonds. And you can see with the 15, 20-year and 30-year scenarios that we've laid out here, you'll notice that the payments are lower upfront on those bonds versus in later years, and that's because we're wrapping now around your existing debt. And that's to kind of help with the fact that we don't want to have too much of a payment spike upfront, any more of a fee increase essentially than we would need to have in order to service the debt on the new bonds. Assuming the $10 million project amount, which was in line with what the architects talked about earlier, in an 8.2 versus 9.2 million facility, issued over 15, 20, and 30 years, you'd be looking at some pretty hefty fee increases, as Dick spoke about, in order to get back to that 1.8x coverage. And as Dick has already discussed, it's important that we have high coverage because investors want it. I mean, currently, your bond rating that we received in 2012 was A2, but a lot of that was predicated on the strong credit position of the college at the time to be able to have that high coverage. If we put the college in a position where we pull back on that coverage to say, because we don't want to have that large of a fee increase to get there, and we go with 1.25x coverage as opposed to the current 1.8 that we're at, that's going to put some pressure on the rating, and that's where it could even cost more for the facility. If you look at the 15-year option, kind of looking at back-of-the-envelope calculations, there'd be about annually about $1.1 million of additional revenue needed to get back to that 1.8x coverage amount each year.
Now, earlier, you were mentioning 1.5 as being kind of the sweet spot?
Coverage-wise, correct. So, there is, there is some room there. I think it was where you're going with that, that we don't necessarily have to hit, you know, 1.8, but going much below 1.5, then, from an investor standpoint, then there starts to become some concerns about coverage.
And you want to think about it also from a sort of enrollment, you know, ebb and flow as well. You know, you could get down to that 150, you know, with some enrollment pullback and, you know. You want to think about, what's a reasonable management range for that?
No, no, point well taken, because we are projecting some decreases in enrollment. And we've seen that last semester, we're seeing it this summer, and anticipate seeing it continuing into the fall.
Yeah, and I think the other thing to point out with that $1.1 million is that that's just purely debt service coverage. That doesn't cover any additional operation and maintenance cost that might go with the facility that would cut into that. If you start considering that, then you're looking at possibly a larger increase to cover debt service and get back to that 1.8, or even possibly at at least a 1.5 coverage ratio.
Kristy?
So, I wasn't here in 2001.
Sure.
I was here in 2012. It looks like the college initially did the 30-year bond.
Correct.
On everything we have, the dormitories, I guess it's, and the student union building.
Yeah, I believe that's correct, yes. So, they did originally 30-year debt, and I sure, I probably assumed that it was for the same reasons, that, you know, they didn't want to have to have any higher, you know, fee than they needed to have at the time, much like what Dick had spoke about with, you know, what's the market for the fee and what's the ability of the students to pay that fee annually? And so, the longer term provides that lower debt service payment to hopefully take some pressure off the fee increase that would be needed to cover the debt.
One more question, Mr. Chair, and I don't believe that you'll be able to answer this, but Ron Dorn, so with our existing debt and projected debt and our enrollment, what's the fee window? what's, what's the fee window?
That's a good point, and I think, you know, looking at this, I'm not sure we have a whole lot, a whole lot of room. And we predict a five percent decrease, and you're looking at figuring it's down a hundred five percent, which is five million dollars in operating, so I'll take a F E number of, uh, oh, four or five hundred, five hundred, maybe an F E, and just mix it up and figure that out. It's going to take probably higher, or will take a higher fee than what they can already get.
More than the hundred dollars they were talking about?
They've launched, uh, the, the, yeah, I think it would be more than that. Yeah, it wasn't a common one. I'm sure it's a common one, again, five percent, it's a little budget, and I probably wouldn't look at it in terms of, of, of standard making, so I think that would happen to look at, you know, and I think it would happen at par.
Yeah, thank you.
Done.
Gentlemen, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong here, I'm looking at the payment dates. Is that our payment dates that we're making payments, uh, for the coupon or the interest rate to the bondholders?
The May and November payment dates, is that what you're looking at?
Yeah, the semi, semi-annual.
Correct. And, and the way I, I arrived at that is that's what the two thousand and twelve bonds are paying, that just kind of aligns with the, a fiscal year.
Does a semi-annual payment schedule give us a higher or lower interest rate versus a quarterly or monthly or annual? Is there any advantage gained, or, I'm just curious? And, and with the compression of interest rates, maybe there's not much spread there?
In different environments, we've seen when, when, when you have a really steep yield curve, sometimes you can pick up some benefit to semi-annual payments, but right now, we're not seeing a lot of benefits, so...
Yeah, we're lucky not to be on an inverted curve right now. Well, we've come a little ways here recently.
They've definitely come up, but, yeah, agreed. I mean, currently with the, the interest rate mi- market we're in, uh, there wouldn't be a lot of benefit to doing that.
These are annual principal payments and semi-annual interest payments, so, uh, it's just one payment a year.
We could have some interest cost savings in paying additional, you know, principal off six months earlier, um, certainly from doing that, but from a purely interest rate cost benefit, um, there wouldn't be any.
Any other questions? Did we interrupt you in the middle of your presentation?
No, I think that, I think that covered most everything. I mean, the, these bonds would be, you know, very similar where there's, uh, you guys have already funded a reserve, they would, you know, require a, a reserve, uh, it's a global reserve, uh, to what's already outstanding, uh, which means we would include all bonds, again, it's all on parity, there'd be a parity reserve, um, and we kind of have some of those numbers of what it would take to, uh, an existing reserve that can be, you know, financed or, you know, cash funded. Uh, but in that, I think that, that covers everything we wanted to cover with you.
Good.
Very informative.
Any other, any other questions of these gentlemen?
One thing I, I would add about the reserve is some people, sometimes, um, people can get hung up about the reserve, and right now, and rightfully so, um, the cost of the reserve right now is whatever your negative carry is, meaning that you are borrowing at, let's say, four per, closer to three in our analysis here, right, uh, or four percent on the, on the student facilities. Your, um, if you can invest that reserve at your borrowing cost, then it's really a wash. You're, you're earning interest at the same rate that you borrowed it at, and you've got the money at the end of the debt service schedule to make that last payment. But right now, as you, as many, or I'm sure all of you know, you can't earn four percent on a short-term liquid investment. So it has to be liquid, obviously, because you need to, if you ever have to use it to pay debt service, you got to be able to access it. So, um, the cost of that reserve is whatever the difference is between what it's invested at and what your cost of borrowing it was. So, um, here we're looking at somewhere between three eighty and four percent for borrowing co- or for, for forty, right, borrowing cost? Um, I think that's on the tech facility, uh, and you're going to invest it at whatever we assume, say, a percent and a half, so there's, you know, somewhere between three to three and a half percent of, of difference there. Something to think about with regard to the reserves.
Good. Thank you very much. I appreciate very much your coming over and helping us, uh, understand this problem a little bit better, and you've done a very nice job of, of enlightening us on this, and thank you.
Yeah, thank you again for your time, we appreciate it.
Thank you for having me.
Thanks, guys. For a guy with economics degree, I got pretty excited there. I thought we were going to start talking Laffer curves and, and some other fun stuff.
Ron, did you have something?
We were truly a bond, we love to talk about hundreds, thousands, millions, and tens of millions, we have more bonds than we might have been able to buy. Now, it had an impact on what we see, we don't, we had these together, we had, what, twenty, thirty-five, or fifty-one million dollars of bonds upstanding, and my debt bonds, forty-two million dollars. It would have an impact on, the, 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 probably all of the banks, but, I would get, I mean, taken and added, that's, that's probably a look on the stuff.
Would that impact the projected ratings that you guys are speculating that we might see?
For the, for the deal bonds, you know, you saw the difference, you know, that's a trillion, it's a large, it's a, 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 it's